It's right at 5:00. We're at Nashua High School North. And this is the Human Resources Committee. I'll call, you'd like to call the role?
I'll call the role.
Ms. Zine?
Here.
Ms. Oden is not here yet. Ms. Timmons is present. Ms. Giglio?
Here.
We have Dr. McKinney. And we have Ms. Carey here.
So having said that, I will turn the meeting over to Dr. McKinney to introduce our candidate.
Thank you, Ms. Zine. As you know, we had a vacancy for the Director of Human Resources. The leadership team conducted a series of interviews and screening process. And we're happy to recommend Ms. Diane Carey. She comes with years of experience in human resources. And is a very recent Tulane University Law graduate. So Ms. Carey, welcome if you'd like to say a few words. And then the committee would probably like to ask you a few questions if that's okay. Thank you.
Well, thank you all for taking this. This is great. I'm really looking forward to it.
You might need to get the mic so that you can speak into it. So that you'll be on TV. And if you don't speak into the mic, they won't be able to hear you. Right there, you'll see it right there beside you.
Did this work?
Yeah, you can take your mask off while you're speaking into the mic.
Pardon me?
You can take your mask off.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Much better.
Okay. Well, I want to first of all, thank you all for meeting with me tonight. I very much am looking forward to working with all of you. As Dr. McKinney mentioned, I do have over 30 years of experience in both the public and the private sector. With most of my experience and leadership capacity, where I've either built HR departments or transitioned HR departments from a function, from a function to, you know, transitioned them to a strategic business partner role by promoting staff development and collaborative partnerships. And I look forward to doing that here as well. And I moved to Nashua almost two years ago. And I love the city. And again, I'm looking forward to joining the school district.
Wasn't a good year for real estate. We increased in value this year in Nashua, 21%. 21%. But you got yours a couple of years ago. So you probably slid right in when it was good.
Yeah, I'm very grateful for that.
I'm glad to hear that.
Thank you.
Do any of the committee members have any questions for our candidate?
Are you still currently working in person?
I am, yes.
So why don't you be joining us?
Slated for July 1st.
Hi, welcome to Nashua. And it's good seeing you. And I'm glad you are part of our team here in Nashua. I do have one question. In your last HR, how many people did you supervise?
In my current role?
Yes.
I had three direct reports up until last year. And I have one position on hold till September because of COVID and budget cuts. But that position will be filled again. So at the moment, two. Prior to that, it was three.
I have one other question. During the pandemic, how did you do with the FMLA, the ADA? How did that affect your district?
Well, we, the city itself closed from March, when we thought it was going to be two weeks. And we opened on a very limited capacity in June. And so we had folks work from home. When we were open to the city, we were opened in a very limited capacity. So we staffed accordingly. Some employees were required to come back to work. Others worked remotely. Others stayed home until we were able to bring them back. With FMLA, we would, if, with the COVID, the Coronavirus Act, if someone had COVID, they would be able to stay out for the extra two weeks. And that certainly didn't go against their sick time. And then we would just put employees on FMLA leave if needed and track that accordingly.
Okay, I have one other question. How did your district do with the hybrid versus remote versus all in-school learning?
The school district is a separate entity from the city. But they recently went back. For some folks, it was a challenge to have their kids and the students at home and doing homeschooling. And even now, we have, there's some parents that prefer the home, you know, and then others prefer the hybrid. And others, you know, wanted their students to go back to school. But they will be opening up this summer and offering summer school as well for the students, just to help catch them up.
Okay, one other question. I'm sorry. I'm excited whenever I say HR person because I dealt with HR for years. And it's one of my pet peeves. I love HR. And I convinced my son to be a partner at Southern Regional and Elliott. So HR is my forte. Nothing else is, but that one is. I do have one other question. How well did you work with your previous, well, not your previous, your current board chair and chair for HR Committee as well as the chair of the board?
Currently, right now, in the city, we do not have a board. On the school side, they do have a board. But I'm not involved with that directly.
Okay.
But I do, we have 11 city councilors on the municipal side.
Okay. I'm sorry. One more little bitty question. We've got a lot of time, so I'm gonna just. I do have one little bitty question. And that question is, on your current board, you have, you don't really interact with them. But you have how many members of that board?
I'm not sure on the school side, how many members are on that board.
So you didn't really work directly with the education piece, the educators and that sort of thing?
No, my role in the city is from, we administer all of, it's flipped from the way it is here in Nashua. And that I, my department handles all of the benefits administration, which includes all of the health and welfare benefits, workers' compensation, unemployment. That's what we do for the school side. And the school has approximately 1,500 employees. They have their own HR department. So I'm not directly involved with the board in that capacity.
So do you know the current makeup of the district, ethnicity, culture?
City of Chelsea is very diverse. The makeup is probably about 70% Latino, Latina.
Okay, okay. So do you, I don't want to interview you because you already had that interview. I just have one question, I promise. So the free and reduced lunch, how is that there in Chelsea?
That I can't speak to. I know that they, during, when COVID first hit, the school was providing free lunches to the kids. Because there are a lot of, unfortunately, a lot of families where that was, you know, their meal. We actually also during COVID as well, had the National Card come in. And we've, we do have a lot of food insecurity. So we're still providing food now to the residents. And this summer, with the summer program, I do know that they will be providing lunches for the students then as well.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Oden.
Can I expand on one of Gloria's questions? I think I understood you saying that in your current position, you deal with the city councilman more than you do the school board. But they are elected, I'm assuming.
Yes.
Councilmen usually are.
Yes.
So how many of them were there, is it?
11.
11, oh, so it was a larger board then. So see, this is gonna be easy for you. You're gonna come in, it could be, you know, like smooth sailing. I certainly hope so. I'm looking forward to it personally. And so it's interesting that you come from a totally different, and yet it's so similar in every way. So are there any questions that you would like to ask us? I know you've had a tour. And I know you've met all our wonderful, all of our wonderful employees. And certainly, as I said to you earlier, our employees are the strength of the district, in my view. That we have some very special, very, very special people. And so I'm sure you'll do admirably with them. So, but do you, do you find it different dealing with the political body as opposed to dealing with employees?
Yes and no. It's still about building partnerships, so.
Still about people, isn't it? Still people skills. Yes, and you certainly seem to have those in abundance. So does anybody else have any, and no questions you wanted to ask us?
Yes, I would be curious. What are some, what are some of the initiatives that you're hoping that I'll be able to help you out with? What are some, what are some areas or priorities that you see as the HR Committee?
I think like in with people, like in, I personally, and I'll certainly allow the others to share with you their thoughts on it. But I think that building relationships with, for instance, the mayor's office. And the, you know, you will be interacting with them on a frequent basis, I would suggest. Because of course, the way our budgets are set up, the mayor pretty much controls the money. At least that's how I, that's my view of it. And so, and he's, I don't know if you've met him yet. But he's a, he's a very personable man. And actually, I personally feel he's been very generous with the district as far as money is concerned. Because money is, we do real estate taxes. I'm sure you know that. And of course, we're not property rich. We're not, there are towns in New Hampshire that are very property rich. But Nashville is not one of them. We have, I think we have 44% free and reduced lunch. At least that's what we had at one time. And I was thinking when you said about employees. I believe the last, and then Dr. McKinney can correct me if I'm wrong. The last time I heard, I think we had 2,000 employees. So we're just a little bit bigger. And I'm sure, I think that's an affluent town. So you probably are, you're probably coming from big money to poverty. But we'll make up for it because we're much charming, very charming. So we'll make up for it in that way. Gloria, would you like to add something?
I would like to add this. Coming from an area where there's 40% of people color, and they're not represented very well here in this district. So I would really like you to open up your heart and your mind to look at the individual versus the skin color and hire the best candidate regardless. And that's my only concern. And other than that, welcome aboard.
Well, thank you very much.
And Ms. Giglio? Sharon is our alternate. I was telling you that we have three voting members. And then we always have an alternate. Ms. Oden is part of the HR Committee. I think she must have misunderstood. I think she probably thought it was 6 o'clock. She probably didn't look on the paper. And, because usually we start at 6:00. So I'm sure she'll be sorry to have missed this, but.
Sure, but we still have a quorum with the two of us, so.
Yes. Did you?
I just wanted to kind of echo what Ms. Timmons said. That we have a very diverse population here and not such a diverse staff. And in going forward, it would be wonderful if our staff more resembled our population of students, always giving the job to the best qualified person. But I think that that would be great for our kiddos. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Ms. Oden has shown up. So maybe, Ms. Oden, this is our, I think you've met her, right?
I did during the seven interviews I filled in for Ms. Zine.
Did you have any questions that you would like to ask her?
No, I had an opportunity back then to meet her. I'm sorry I'm late. I looked on the website and I saw 5:00. So my fault. It probably said something else somewhere else. So no, the only question I had, I know Dr. McKinney had wanted to do an audit of the HR department. Have you seen that or is it ready? Do you know?
I'm not sure.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Thank you.
So hopefully, when you get in, you do your own audit. Because that's usually what HR people do. They do their own audit and evaluate their own staff. So that would be nice. I'm just gonna, if you don't mind, Ms. Zine came in at 5:16?
Ms. Oden.
I'm sorry, Ms. Oden. I'm looking at Ms. Zine. I'm sorry, Ms. Oden came in at 5:16.
Well, we're both so beautiful, I can see why you'd get us mixed up.
Okay, I just wanted to note that.
No, yeah, no, no.
Okay.
And Ms. Oden, she had asked if there were any special initiatives that you were interested in her getting involved with as she comes on the board. I don't know if you had any thoughts on that. Dot, did you hear me?
It's all right.
Sorry. No, it's all right. Just saying that she had asked if we had any initiatives that we were particularly interested in her getting involved in as she comes on the board.
I think at this point, just getting to know your department and your people. And, you know, I think that's a big load at this point. So good luck.
And it goes, there are so many other, there are just so many people that you get involved with. I mean, you really get involved with the state reps. You get involved with the aldermen. You get involved with even the Department of Education in Concord. Edelbluth, of course, is the commissioner. So a lot of, a lot of exciting new faces to get to know and build trust relationships that I'm sure you can, I think you have that down pat. So I look forward to seeing you charm them all. Is there any? Yeah, oh, I know you'll do wonderfully. Anything, anybody else? So Dr. McKinney, do we?
Nothing else. The recommendation for Ms. Carey is included in the personnel recommendations, which is the last item on the agenda. So there are revised version here for you tonight.
But we need, as a committee, we need to vote to pass it on to the full board. So can I get a motion from one of the, from one of our two members?
I'd like to move that we recommend, I'm sorry, Ms. Carey, for the, I need glasses, sorry. For the position of Human Resources at a salary of, hold on. I know I have it here. Do you want to say, Ms. Oden or Ms. Zine?
115.
Oh, yeah, 100. Recommend to approve Diane Carey, Director, Human Resources, for the 2021 to 2022 school year at an annual salary of $115,000.
Second?
So Ms. Timmons recommended, second by Ms. Oden.
And so, how do you vote, Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Yes. And Ms. Oden?
Yes.
And Ms. Zine says yes. So we're all looking forward. Gloria, Sharon will get to vote on the next, at the next level. Okay? So, and I guess she knows that she can hang around if she wants to. But it's gonna be a long, you may not want to. But you're certainly more than welcome to if you choose to.
Got through the first hurdle, so.
Yes, yes, yes.
So congratulations and.
Well, thank you.
That's it for us.
Yes, that's it for us. Thank you.
I bet you're looking forward to that short commute.
Oh, yes, that would be much nicer.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so I'll turn it back to you, Dr. McKinney.
Next, we have requests for hire. Ms. Bagley's here, Director of Special Education. She has two documents in your packet. I'd like to invite her up to speak to those two things for a moment, if that's okay.
Yes, that's fine. Did you, did you meet our new HR director?
I walked in with her.
Oh, wow.
It was wonderful, so are you right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Marsha is one of our very special employees as well. Well, no, I'm very sincere.
Thank you. So I submitted two memos. The first one I would like to speak about is the one that is dated May 10th, about hiring recent retirees. And as you can see, we are looking to add two part-time positions for next school year. Specifically, a special ed reading specialist, which is an area of, that's highly sought after. And unfortunately, not many people in that area, in those areas. And then also a part-time bilingual speech pathologist. Speech pathologists are already in the area of critical shortage. And then you add in the fact that we are looking for a bilingual speech pathologist. It further compounds our search. So we have done interviews for the reading specialist. We have identified a candidate of choice. She is retiring at the end of this school year. As you probably are aware, the school district has a board policy that requires retirees to be separated from the district for a year before we can hire them to work with us on a part-time basis. But the New Hampshire retirement system stipulates that they have to be separated from their previous employer or employment for 28 days. So I'm here to ask if, for you to consider waiving the board policy so that we can move forward with hiring this specific candidate for our special ed reading specialist. And then the part-time bilingual speech pathologist will be grant funded. We, as I'm sure you all know, during COVID, we got behind on our evaluations. And we have an increased need for evaluation, specific bilingual evaluations or just simply Spanish communication evaluations. And we would like to hire our bilingual speech pathologist on a part-time basis for next school year to help us with all of the evaluations that were missed during COVID. So in this instance, I'm asking to waive the board policy for both of these hires.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Well, I was just gonna ask you a question. The, these two people that are, that are being hired, I know that, I remember specifically that the pathologists were not very competitive. Is that the case also with the reading, bilingual reading specialist as well?
So the reading specialist is a special education teacher who has certifications in specific reading programs. Orton Gillingham is one of them. That's a very, it's a very intensive reading program. So the, these candidates would still fall onto whatever steps on the teacher contract based on their years of experience. Speech pathologists are kind of unique because speech pathologists can work in other clinical settings. So if we're comparing salaries for speech pathologists, the clinical setting is a different, it's a whole different ballgame for them.
So how much will these people be making? Is that something that was here that I missed?
No, because I don't set salary. So I haven't been able to move forward.
Well, and it goes to, I'm sorry, you just told us it goes to the, to how many years they have. And these people are both retiring. So they'll probably be at the top of the, but it's still, with the pathologist, I don't, I still don't think it will be, I don't see how it could be competitive with the figures I heard about speech pathologists. But I don't know about the other one.
All right. Both of these candidates would fall onto the teacher scale in the contract. So wherever they would fall is.
And I didn't mean to interrupt you. Please continue.
I was just gonna move on to the next memo. If anybody, if there were no more questions about the retirees.
Well, do we want, do we have questions? Maybe we want to make the motion for this?
I think we should make that motion for those two particular.
To waive the?
But to waive the board, I, move to waive the board policy for the reading specialist and the speech language pathologist.
Yeah, but it's not the board's policy, it's the?
It's at the bottom of.
New Hampshire Retirement.
It's the way, a board policy, GCGD.
Okay.
New Hampshire Retirement System has a different requirement. But the Nashville Board of Education's policy, GCGD, indicates it has to be a full year.
And I do, when I was county commissioner, we had, we had the same issue. And so I remember that, I assumed they must get a lot of waivers. Because I know that at county, we, we did make, we did make those concessions. Do, any, any questions?
I'd like to amend what I just said. And I don't see the policy to cover that. Okay. So I'd like to recommend that the HR waive policy, GCGD, to allow the Special Education Department can hire for these two critical positions for the 2021, 2022 school year in a part-time capacity, not to see 1,352 hours in a calendar year.
I'll second that.
No questions or anything, Sharon, or? Okay. Then how do you vote, Ms. Timmons?
Ms. Timmons vote yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
And Ms. Zine's, yes. Next?
The next memo you have is about a school psychologist's job share proposal. We are currently, as of yesterday, we have four open school psychology positions for next school year that we've been unable to fill even as much as we've tried. We've, this, for the, most of the year, we've had two and a half positions unfilled. We have been able to secure contract workers to provide some support. But that's not always easy to sustain. And it's, it's not as effective in some cases because they're only available limited, very limited hours. We, so this memo says that we have three openings for the 2122 school year. In fact, as of this week, we have four openings for the 2122 school year. The school psychologists fall on the critical shortage list for the New Hampshire Department of Education, which makes our pool even smaller for candidates. So I'm here asking that we can possibly, for one of these positions, create a job share position for one, school psychologist to work with us for three days a week and one to work with us for two days a week. We have been approached by two different former employees who would like to come back and work with us, but only on a very part-time basis for them. We don't currently have any part-time openings available. So I'm asking that we be able to create one of these, I'm sorry, put two part-time positions into one full-time position.
So the motion is to make two part-time psychologists into?
One full-time.
One full-time.
Position in a job share format.
Right. So, Doty, I'm sorry.
Ms. Oden?
I just, I just want to thank Marsha for being creative to make sure our kids are being served. This is one of my main concerns, as Dr. McKinney knows. It's, we, we need them during the regular time. And after this pandemic, the COVID-19, more kids are going to need this. And I thank you for being creative and finding us full-time coverage with two part-timers. Thank you.
I, unfortunately, I can't take the credit. It was our chief school psychologist who came up with this idea. So Ann Price gets the credit.
And Ann Price for this?
I will.
And thank you for bringing it to us.
Yeah.
I support it wholeheartedly. And if you can get more, I'll support that.
Thank you.
Well, in this case, it's actually because you're getting somebody seasoned. You're getting experience. In my view, experience is the most valuable thing you can have. Because education is one thing. But to have education with experience, because unfortunately, some of the things, they don't teach you in the textbooks. They don't teach you about Jay in the textbooks, I'm sure. But anyway. So did you make the motion?
Do you want to make the motion?
Ms. Oden, did you want to? I guess.
I recommend to allow the Special Education Department to hire two part-time school psychologists to fill one full-time position in a job share format.
I second that.
Okay. And your vote?
Yes, Ms. Timmons vote yes.
And Ms. Oden?
Yes.
And Ms. Zine votes yes. So you have our unanimous support?
Thank you.
And our unanimous appreciation.
Thank you very much.
I never hear anybody say anything but kind words about you. Well, it's a big job.
Thank you.
It's a huge job, it really is. And, and much like the school board, sometimes you just can't win. I don't care what you do, you can't make everybody happy. So you come as close to it as anybody I know. So for that, we thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zine.
And so our next agenda item is, Dr. McKinney? Are you gonna take over here? I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Zine. Our last special guest this evening is the one and only Greg Rodriguez, the Director of Technology, who's here to present for job descriptions for the HR Committee's approval. Good evening, Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you for having me, Dr. McKinney. Thank you for having me, Dr. McKinney. I'd like to thank Marcia for softening you all up before, so.
Yes.
Thank you for having me tonight. Looking to hire five total positions. The first one, as you know, we've had quite the influx of devices come into the district with, even within the past three or four months, with another few thousand coming in this summer. So, the first position, it does already exist at our schools, is the Assistant Systems Administrator. I'm looking to add two. So, since 2016, we've added 10,000 devices, but no additional Assistant Systems Administrators to take care of those devices. So, we have no shortage of work in that, in that regard. So, this position, or these positions, you know, they, they support desktops, laptops, Chromebooks, phone support, just any awkward issue that we have relating to IT is, is what these people work on. So, so I'm asking for two positions with grant-funded money to move forward.
Thank you for everything that you did in the last year. I watched it firsthand with all my grandchildren, and I do some right now, it's still in remote, and the complications that you guys went through and had, hats off to you. I mean, it had to be a lot of work, and I appreciate all that you've done.
It's the team. We, we really just, we banded together, and we did what we needed to do, to be done for the district, so.
Can you give us a little update on the Chromebooks? Did we ever get the rest of them? No?
So, they're coming, they're still coming in pieces, just because we, we did order, like, a white glove service, just because we, it's a lot to handle, especially during the school year. So, the company that we bought them through, a connection, they did enroll them at the same, at the same time before delivering to us. So, we are still getting them in batches. So, we got two small shipments today. But as soon as we get them, they're going out to the schools, so.
And do we, are we, are we finding that the, well, we probably don't know yet, do we, how, what condition they come back in, some of the kids. I know my grandson dropped his. I thought his mother was gonna die. She almost went after him. She said, "Don't do that." Well, they don't understand. I mean, he's seven years old. So, he didn't realize that they're pretty delicate. They're easily broken, and easily nightmares for, for you guys, so.
Yeah, this is, I'm kinda dreading June 16th a little bit, even though it's the last day of school, and then when they start collecting, it's, it's still, it's gonna be, it's really gonna see where we lie, because we did experience about a 15% loss. I can't, I can't really quite remember the percentage, but it was around that area of, from the spring, and that was just three months. These students have had the devices for nine months.
Right. So, how many would that be? How many do we have currently? Am I?
Close to 8,000.
Well, 15%, it would be quite a few.
Maybe anticipating a little bit more.
So, you're talking probably 1,000 anyway?
Probably a little bit more, yeah.
Wow.
Yeah. So, we have a work cut out for us this summer, so that's why these positions are really important, just to support those schools.
They used to be. Uh-huh, I'm sorry.
Could we ask Mr. Rodriguez just to speak to the other three positions, in particular the two that are new? Would that be okay?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah. So, the other position I'm looking at to, that are new, is the digital coordinator position. So, this is unique to Nashville, but it's not unique to school districts in New Hampshire, New England, and around the country. So, if you kind of squint your eyes a little bit, you can't really tell the difference between technology and education right now. For us, we don't speak education. Admittedly, I have no idea what Dr. McKinney is talking about, and then when I talk tech to him, it doesn't, it doesn't, it, it's like we're speaking two different languages. So, this person would, would be an educator who also is immersed in technology, and who has best, who knows best practices in education and technology, and how we can really work with, with other teachers in the district, like tech integrators, technologies, integrator assistants of the TIA's at the elementary school, for best practices in, in the classroom. So, this position is crucial. So, if, you know, if this position is approved, it would, it would serve as a liaison between curriculum and technology. This person would also coordinate all the testing for the district, so all the, the SAS testing, SATs, all, all that. Because for us, as a department, it's, we look at it as more of, of another thing to do at that, but we really have a dedicated person to work on those things. So, this person would, would work with all the schools, all the testing administrators, the, and the, and the, just the building administrators in general, on a testing schedule. So, that's something we do lack at the moment. So, and it is a weakness we have in the department. So, this position would kind of fill in the gap with that weakness.
So, where will that be funded from?
Grant funding as well.
Grant.
All these positions are grant-funded, just?
Correct.
Exactly, okay. Wonderful.
Yep. The other, the other new position is a database administrator. We are flush with data, as we know, and we have, again, you know, due to circumstances in Department Four, we haven't had a chance to really take an evaluation and expand where we needed to expand on. One of the things that we, that we are deficient in is a dedicated person who manages our data, who integrates it, who implements it, who plans it out, who, and, and maintains it, and also looks at the privacy to ensure our security for our students. So, this database administrator, although it has a bunch of complicated terms on there, this person would be dedicated to deal with those complicated terms, and, and the jobs associated with it. So, this person would be fluent in our database, also in coding languages like Java, HTML, SQL, all those things. So, this is a very specialized skill set that we're looking for to be added to our department.
You missed one.
I did miss one.
Yes, you did. The digital coordinator, you didn't, you didn't talk about that.
Oh, that's the, the, the data analyst one?
Yep.
Yeah, I was gonna look at that one, too.
Okay.
Yeah, so, we have the data annual analyst position, there we go. So, we have an I-4C coordinator right now. It's also a data analyst, so I'm looking to add another I-4C coordinator. So, districts that are comparable to our size, like Manchester has three people performing this job, I believe London Darius, two, we have one.
Wow.
So, it's, it's a lot of work to do. So, and we have to contract some of that work out. So, this would actually save us money in the long run, so we need to contract this work out to help us with our state reporting. So, and as we know, reporting is a very big deal, especially to the state. So, this would actually help out not only our department, but the district as a whole.
So, do, do I have a motion? Mrs. Oden?
Sorry, I have a question. It, it says these positions will be funded through the S R 2 grants pending approval by the New Hampshire Department of Education. Do either of you know, has the Department of Education already approved another district funding things like this out of the S R grants?
Mrs. Oden, don't know if other districts have been approved. We only know what's approved on our end. So, first step would be approving the job descriptions. Next step would be submitting it to the state for approval. Based on the webinars and information provided to us, technology, like the requests that are here, are approvable, but you don't really know until the state sees it and approves it.
Okay, thank you. Just hoping that they approve it and see the need as, as we see it. I, I move to approve the job descriptions for the positions funded through the S R 2 allocated funds pending approval by the New Hampshire Department of Education.
I second that.
Do you talk to them a lot?
The Department of Education? I do not, but Dr. McKinney and Assistant Superintendent.
Probably not too many people do, because obviously, and, and we're a tiny state, but.
I'm a little glad they don't reach out to me.
Actually, I think that's a wise, I think that's a wise, a wise thought there.
I know the, the data analyst in our department, the I-4C coordinator, is, is in direct communication quite a bit with, with, with the Department of Education.
I wish we weren't so partisan. I, I really do. It gets way, in my view, it's way too partisan. But anyway, so that's why it's probably best just, just, just.
Stay away.
Yeah, stay away. Don't look for trouble until it hits you. So, so, did we get a second on that motion?
Yes.
Okay. Your vote?
Ms. Timmons votes yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
And Mrs. Zine votes yes.
Excellent.
So, we're looking forward, and thank you so much for, I, the blessing that came, the blessing that came out of the pandemic is that we finally got some of our technology even, even close to where it should be.
Yep.
It wasn't before.
There is, there was a positive, that was a positive, but there's really a lot of negatives, too, so.
But people didn't realize, that was one of the reasons that it made it so hard for us to, to immediately spin on a dime and go right into, I mean, we just didn't have the technology to do it, so. But, but people don't realize, they don't pay attention until it's too late, unfortunately. We're all guilty of that. So, thank you for coming. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And so, now we are to personnel recommendations. Dr. McKinney?
Yes, you got a updated copy, a revised, May 26, 21 revised personnel recommendations. We added a couple more teachers that went through the hiring process, so we'd like to move them forward, because we're definitely gonna need them next year, so.
Well, I move to approve the personnel recommendation revised copy dated May 26, 2021.
Second. So, any questions, comments? Gloria, your vote?
Yes, Ms. Timmons votes yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
And Mrs. Zine votes yes. So, that's unanimous. So, that being said, is there any additional business to come before this committee, Dr. McKinney?
No, Mrs. Zine, all suffered tonight. Thank you.
No, no, thank you. Thank you for coming, Sharon. We, we appreciate your efforts. That being said.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We are adjourned.